I'm here in startup, big and small. We're not doing that. I'd love to see a committee convene between you guys and hospitality and the ag industry and other industries to sit down and brainstorm about how can Monterey County become a magnet that would become known in this state as a place where business comes to startup and spend money. That's how you're going to grow your budget, doing that kind of thing. So think long and hard about this. We're in a really difficult business climate right now. Energy prices are high. It's tough out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bun.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. Good to see you. My name is Kristin Horton. I'm the Executive Director of Monterey County Hospitality Association, otherwise known as MCHA. MCHA is a trade organization focused on advocacy, workforce development, and the overall vitality of the local hospitality industry. Our membership represents lodging properties, restaurants, and hospitality-related businesses throughout Monterey County. And our member lodging properties represent over 1,200 rooms in the unincorporated areas of the county alone. We strongly oppose a TOT increase. The timing simply is not right. I'd like to talk a little bit about group business and lodging. Group business or conferences in larger groups visiting the area will be severely impacted by a TOT increase. California recently announced that visitor spending has exceeded 2019 levels throughout the state, but not here in Monterey County. Monterey County is one of the few counties that have not fully recovered. Group business continues to be below 2019 levels here in Monterey County. It is imperative that we keep our area competitive as we recover as an industry to encourage group business. While a slight TOT increase may not discourage the individual traveler, groups and meeting planners booking 100, 300, 500 rooms account for TOT charges when booking business. These charges will affect where they ultimately decide to send their groups for overnight travel and conferences. The group business is also an essential segment in marketing the region for tourism overall. Increase in group business through 2025 and beyond will significantly help our region to exceed the 2019 threshold, as most of our surrounding counties have already done. As we advocate for our membership in lodging properties--
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors and Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Shane Orser. I'm here as a representative of The Quail on 8205 Valley Greens Drive. I would like to remind you that The Quail's been a part of this community since the 1960s. We are well-known throughout the entire Monterey County, and it is our opinion that we support the assertions that the MCHA has made here today. We are a member of that group, and further, we would like to say that unless there is an identifiable reason or purpose that will improve the unincorporated areas of Monterey County, like road repair or generating additional tourism demand, we do not support the TOT increase. I'll keep it brief, and thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Gary Curcio, Director of Government Affairs for MCHA. You must send a clear message to the voter to pass a successful tax increase. When the voter sees multiple tax increase initiatives, they become easily confused, and in many cases, the easy out is to vote no on both or all. Thus, you risk ending up with nothing. Staff estimates that 1% sales tax increase will generate $29 million versus a combined TOT increase roughly $3.4 million. And the city of Monterey, by the way, generates their sales tax comes 64% of their sales tax is from the-- they're all from non-residents, 64%. Is leaving $26 million on the table really what is in the best interest of the county budget and your constituents? We urge you to vote in favor of the 1% sales tax and only the 1% sales tax. Thank you.
Any other comments from inside the chambers? I see none. Do we have anybody online?
Elizabeth Tyler.
Yes, Ms. Tyler, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Appreciate it. I am a psychiatric social worker with Monterey County Children's Behavioral Health, which a position I have held on the juvenile justice team for 22 and 1/2 years. And I wanted to speak in support of both of these measures because, as you saw last week, there is an astonishing and heartbreaking flood of folks leaving positions within the county, positions that directly support children, families, and which enhance safety in our communities. So I would like to encourage you to give strong consideration to this because the negotiators at the table are telling us there is insufficient funds to give us a contract that might be able to attract and retain staff here. So pretty urgent for us, and I will likewise keep it brief, but I will also add that in the Department of Behavioral Health, we bill for our services. I bill Medi-Cal directly to support my position, so the funding for my position does not come from the general fund. Just a little bit of a heads up. Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it, and I will absolutely 100% see you at the next meeting that we have an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia.
Alicia, you have two minutes. Alicia, are you online? We have another person?
Kathleen Lee.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes, Alicia.
I apologize. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and all who are present. My name's Alicia Metters. I am a social worker in Family Children Services. Monterey County have been since 2001. Again, proud resident of Monterey County and proud to serve my county in that capacity. Also, proud member of SEIU 521. And we, as the sister previously said, you heard us last week when we described the vacancy crisis and how it's affecting the people we serve. You know we're in contract negotiations, and management is saying that we don't have enough money for a fair contract to recruit and retain employees. In that context, we urge you today to seek every option available, and I've heard some other good ones as well, if it's not going to come through these two measures. But we would ask that you would try everything in your power to fix the budget issues. We know that our most vulnerable population in our community are people of color, women, and children, and we need to do whatever we can in order to be able to serve them and to serve them appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kathleen Lee.
Yes, Kathleen, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Church, and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I'm Kathleen Lee with the Pebble Beach Company. Just want to echo the sentiments already expressed by MCHA and other representatives. Our group business has not yet returned and is a significant portion of revenue in TOT that is currently generated within the Pebble Beach Company, and that, as a reminder, was $16.1 million in 2023. So we do have concerns about any impact to the potential of group business, and TOT is articulated by Kristin certainly is looked at when you're looking at a significant number of rooms. I also want to thank Mr. Vega for an excellent staff report. The board does have a significant amount of money that would need to be spent to prepare any of these items for a ballot measure, and I would just simply urge the board to consider the return on investment on that and consider that the strongest return on investment is supporting a sales tax increase over a TOT. As Supervisor Leho has articulated, when you're looking at ballot measures, there is voter fatigue, and your consultants will have remind you that supporting one measure or another is really the best way to go versus having a number of measures that might not meet that critical threshold to pass. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate the work that you're doing to serve the residents of Monterey County.
Dr. Paige Viren.
Yes, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Paige Viren, and I'm the Executive Director for the Sustainable Hospitality and Tourism Management Program at Cal State Monterey Bay. I strongly believe that tourism enhances the economy, the culture, and the environment, and, as noted in our program name, sustainability is essential. Sustainable tourism is really about a triple bottom line, which means balancing the economic, social, and environmental benefits of tourism. At this time, I don't believe it's economically sustainable for us to have the TOT initiative on the November ballot. Our program's dedicated to training the future leaders of this vital industry, and if we leave that economic part off of this right now, I believe we're really fragile as we recover from the impacts of COVID. And as mentioned previously, group numbers are impacted, conferences and meetings, which are a big part of the industry in Monterey County. So at this time at least, introducing new taxes could deter some of the visitor and hinder our recovery. So I respectfully urge you to vote no on placing the TOT on the fall ballot, and let's prioritize the recovery and sustainability of our tourism industry first. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. No more. No other commenters, and I see nobody else at the chamber, so we'll close public comment and bring it back here to the board. I'm going to, I'll just start off, again, I'll state the same things I've stated previously. Pacific Grove's at 12%, Monterey's at 12%, Marina's at 14%, Delray Oaks has on the ballot to raise its TOT from 12% to 14%. Santa Barbara is proposing this year to raise theirs from 12% to 14%. We're at 10 and 1/2% in the county. Every other entity around us, county or city within the county, is at a higher percentage. And I understand the argument about multiple measures on the ballot. The fact is, there's going to be multiple measures on the ballot whether we put anything on there or not. There's state measures, there's local measures. The City of Salinas is looking at raising or actually making permanent its 1% sales tax, and that would itself, if it was on the ballot with the City of Salinas, would be a potential problem because we have a county at 1% and 1% for the city, and it looks like people are getting a 2% raise when they would not getting anything actually. So there is room for confusion, but that's going to happen in any tax issue that's going to come up. I believe even King City is, I think there's something being discussed down there. I have expressed that if we do raise the TOT, I'm in favor of increasing the DSA percentage to promote visitors and to make it a stable amount so that there can be sustainable, long-term planning. That goes hand-in-hand with my position on this. But I will also state, I can't support just a sales tax increase and then not have put up the TOT. 60% of my constituents are in the county, unincorporated area. They are basically working, working people, middle-income people, who will be being asked to pay for a higher tax to fund whatever purpose we're using in the county. At the same time, we would not be asking visitors who come into this county, go through North County, I should say, and have thousands of dollars in hand to spend, and that we're not going to be taking any higher increase out of that. I can't go back to the people in my district and take that position. That's where I'll support putting them both on or nothing at all at this point. Anybody else want to make a comment? Supervisor Leho?
Thank you very much. I respect my colleagues' opinions here, but I think, you know, I had mentioned earlier, this is my 16th year of politics, and long before I ever got in politics, I was a high school teacher, then I went to law school. But at the age of 19, I became a young community organizer. Since 1994, I've had the opportunity to work on a lot of different campaigns, candidates mostly, but we had a library measure, we had several public safety measures, we had several tax measures, we had a smart growth measure in my hometown. And one thing I've learned out of all those campaigns is that if you're going to be successful, you have to be strategic, you have to be smart, you have to be willing to roll up your sleeves and walk and do the work that is needed to educate voters on why each measure is important. But one thing that I've learned from the failed campaigns is that you've got to realize that if you have organized opposition, if you have potential supporters that are now either sitting out or now working against you, then you're undermining your goal to raise revenue, to continue to provide or amplify services for our residents, and do the things that they're asking for. We did a polling, so we know what kind of issues they would support. So to Mr. Bun's point, yes, let's focus on those issues that voters say, if you put this before us, we'll vote it if you use these funds for these general purposes. It's a general purpose fund, but we can say, we're going to focus these dollars on these different areas, just like Santa Cruz did and who were successful. This is long overdue, but obviously, we had a pandemic that hit us hard, and some of our folks in hospitality still haven't fully recovered from that. We couldn't do it during those years, of course, but we're behind. Monterey County is very behind, and I know Mr. Bun spoke, but I don't know if he listened last time, that we're at the very bottom of any sales tax. We're lower than San Bernardino County, Santa Cruz County, SLO County, all our neighbors, Santa Clara County, they're all much higher than we are, and we're at the very bottom compared to even our 12 cities. If we were to raise it only 1%, we would only match the two other bottom local jurisdictions, King City and Gonzalez, to just match it. We would still be at the very bottom and further away from our other sister cities within our county. So the other thing I wanted to mention, going back to strategy, is that I wish we had, I brought this up after Santa Cruz County was successful. I said, we've got to start looking for revenue-generating measures because our costs are going up, we're being asked for more from our communities, from our employees, and we're not keeping up with generating revenue. Other counties started much earlier than we have. They started months ago, a year before. It was even on the ballot. And that's for, considering that, that's where I'm saying, we have a short amount of time. We've got to decide by the end of this month. We've got to reach out to a lot of partners and stakeholders to support this measure. And that's why I believe strongly that we have to focus on, one, do it right, get it off the finish line, and be successful, not be a failure because we were stretching ourselves too thin, knowing that we started too late. I'm not about putting an effort to lose, I'm about putting an effort to win. You're in it to win it. And what's concerning is that, and I mentioned this last meeting, is that there is ballot measures on the November ballot that weren't an issue for the primary ballot, and we still don't have all the information on what Salinas is going to do because they might just extend their 1 cent tax because many do a sales tax, they only do it for 15, 20 years, and then their next ballot measure is not raising it more, it's rather just extending it indefinitely. So we still don't have the information of what they're actually going to do. It might not be really competing, it might just be keeping what they already have. But I am concerned about that statewide ballot measure that could have confusing messages for our voters. And that's where, again, I want to focus, have us focus on the sales tax. The TOT is a discussion for another day. That doesn't go away, but it's down the road where it's not being an impediment and perhaps hindering business, as our industry leaders have mentioned here today. Our consultants gave us advice, they are too, you know, so these folks who do these, they work on these measures, and they're saying under this environment, and at this point, late point in time, it's perhaps better to focus on one. Our staff also feel the same, and like, again, I don't want us to fail. I want Monterey County to be successful. Let's generate this, let's be successful in this ballot measure. Let's get all our stakeholders in business, in ag, in construction, in the labor movement, our community leaders, our nonprofit leaders. Let's learn from what our other neighbors did to be successful as well. We have a good opportunity. Let's bring as many people together as possible, and let's avoid where we have dissent and disagreement and perhaps organized opposition. Thank you.
Supervisor Askew.
Yeah, so much to say. So I'm going to start and say that in order to prepare, the cost to prepare these required ordinance and ballot measures is estimated to be about $200,000. So I understand that we're not being asked to do a four-fifths vote today, but I want to feel very confident that we've got, if we're going to proceed and expend those dollars, I need to make sure that we've got a four-fifths support for whatever direction we give today. So that's a first thing. Secondly, I think many of the comments that I made over the course of previously when we've discussed this still stand to me to say, given the additional conversations I've had. We did polling. We talk about making decisions based on facts, based on data. We have data available to us about the TOT being fairly well-supported by our voter base and the sales tax potentially, you know, walking the middle line. So I think that if we were looking at data and we wanted to have success, it's very clear to me that we would move forward with TOT. However, I believe that with the support of the full board and the support of the community, we could also ask the voters to consider the sales tax. We're not, by taking action today, we're not putting either one of these, we're not initiating these taxes, but we're giving them to the voters to allow our voting populace to make their own decision about how they would like us to generate revenue. I, too, have fairly extensive experience as a community organizer. I've been initiated through citizens' referendums, multiple initiatives in the community where I live. As a school board member, we've put bonds on to support needs in the school district. And I do believe that the voters are wise and capable of making these decisions, and that our duty as a board is to give the opportunity to the voters. Glenn, you mentioned, and I'd mentioned last week, that I'm absolutely on board to talk about increasing a DSA and putting a clear dollar amount in for, with the percentage of a successful TOT proposition. So that's something that I'll mention again. I'm also going to say that, you know, we've got, we have significant funding needs in this county. We just did our budget. We have huge needs at the parks, we have huge water infrastructure needs, we have capital needs, we have workforce and vacancy needs that need to be addressed. I'm going to speak to the children in our community who don't have paid lobbyists to stand up and tell us about the things that they also need, but data is available to us to let us know what those needs are. We talk about, someone mentioned wanting to make sure that any funds generated through TOT would go to support roads in the unincorporated community, and literally, we have a financial policy that 25% of all TOT generated does go to support road improvement in the unincorporated community. So any increase in TOT would result in a very direct increase through board policy for infrastructure and benefit to roads utilized by our visitor-serving community. I think we need to put both of these on the ballot. I think that it's very clear to me that if we want to see at least one of them pass, the TOT is the one that will, and it's going to be a little bit more of a heavy lift for us to move the sales tax forward. But I don't want to walk away from the end of this, having not had anything pass and being in the same position that we are now, moving forward. So we'll see how we get to four fifths. And again, I think it's important that we hit, somehow come to four fifths today because I don't think it's fair to direct staff. They're going to need time to, and to dedicate the $200,000 in resources to build out the language necessary.
Supervisor Adams.
Since we're all wagging our tails of experience, I think mine's probably the biggest because I've been active in organizing campaigns since before at least two of the members of this board were even born. The first being Sam Far's first race for the Board of Supervisors, second, Henry Mello's first race for the State Assembly, and third, Richard Silver's race for the board to be the Superior Court Judge. I'm in truth telling you that I have never backed a candidate or an issue that has not won. I have a good political nose, and I like to use it. When I look at this situation, I really am looking at the return on investment, which I think Wendy was just talking about a little bit ago. But when we look at the cost of almost $500,000 to get this measure on the ballot, either or both, and then looking at what we would get back from the TOT part as compared to what we would get back from the sales tax part, to me, it doesn't make any sense to do anything but focus on the sales tax. I think the key issue here really is trying to determine whether we just do one or both. And my sense tells me that we would be far more successful, have far more success by just doing one, and that's the sales tax, so that we could put all of our energy and resources into that. But if we do not have the vote today to do that, my suggestion is that we postpone making that decision until there's a little more data that comes in so people can think about it just a little bit more and make the determination very, very quickly on whether we're going to do one or both. If we do both, I think that we're, you know, even though we're asking voters for different things, I think the words that have been thrown around, voter fatigue, you know, just saying no to everything, those are real possibilities. The ballot measure is already going to be a very, very full slate, and I think the less that we put on and the more focused we are, the better off we're going to be. So those are just my thoughts from a long tale of years.
Supervisor Lopez, you want to share your political experience?
Sure, while we're at it, here's my resume. No, I'm not going to do that. I don't want--
I couldn't resist.
It's already nearly 4 o'clock. We didn't finish the last item. I know we're coming back, so I want to be concise and just say that my position's not changed from last week. I know I was very clear about where I stand. Prefer to see one measure move forward, just given the voter fatigue potential, if that's what we're calling it today. But big picture, I've not yet heard an argument that's moved me away from that position in terms of what I've seen from the data that I think is important to call out is a big desire from the community to see additional investment in infrastructure, specifically roads. And if we're going to put forward an amount, I said this last time, over 1%, I would be supportive of that. I want to see it address major issues in our community, specifically roads, as was called out as a top issue in that survey of our community, but also the issue in San Lucas. I think we can put these forward as issues that matter to our community, that folks want to see addressed and start to bring the change. And so I, again, support one motion going forward. I'm not saying that in the future I wouldn't be supportive of seeing a TOT initiative go on the ballot, but is the current need that we have, at the amount we're talking about, I don't think we can raise TOT another 10% to match 1% of sales tax. And so for me today, to make this effective, I would like to see us move forward with the sales tax piece.
Yes.
I just wanted to respond to our colleagues because it seems like we did polling and it seems they would support both. If you look at the, just remind our folks on the polling, they did two separate groups of people taking the questionnaire, like 300 on just the TOT and 300 on the sales tax. And they stayed away from doing both because they knew it was going to have an impact. So what the poll doesn't tell us is that if you have two, how would they react to both on the ballot? Because there were two separate groups of pollies, if you would, you could say, and they only gave their opinion on that one, the one revenue generating measure asked of them. So I just want to be clear on that point for talking about these polling numbers.
So I don't think we have four votes here today to do anything. So it's this point, we, you know, it's fourth and long, and it's probably--
But just to keep us this progress, what I would suggest, because today we don't need four votes, and I'm not even suggesting we pick one or the other, but at some point, at a future meeting this month, we have to decide on one or both. And so I think the next direction for staff would be for our county council to actually draft both, right? You draft both--
I mean, we could go that route, but if we're not going to get to four votes--
Yeah, but you see, but at a future meeting, if you have the language of what both could look like, the vote, this board, knowing it needs to get to four, can decide on just one or on two. And we kind of know where on two might go, just on what we heard here today. But to not waste time, we know that that's ultimately what has to happen for us to be able to get to a point where we can actually make a decision and vote on the actual language, one or both. Rather than keep wasting time, we come back here next week, and we're saying, oh, we still don't know. Well, we know. We've got to get the language in front of us. What does each option look like? Vote on one or vote on-- Vote on one or vote on both.
That was sort of the direction I was going to tend to go in some ways, that we need to have, we're going to have to come back down to next week or whenever we're going to put this forward to, and we need to try to address some other issues here so we have something new in front of us and new information. So you're suggesting having some language in front of us.
I wouldn't speak for county council, but I think her team needs to be able to do that work, and we don't have that, we don't have it on agenda. At a future agenda, we need to have it agendized per the Brown Act, let the public weigh in. I think on the sales tax, I think they have to be the option of language, which shouldn't be too much, but the option of all voters voting or a narrow, more narrow group of voters. And then it's before us, it's been agendized, it's been vetted 72 hours in advance, and then we could be able at that point to make an ultimate decision.
What I would propose is we bring back the potential resolutions to place on the ballot. You're not talking about the ordinance.
Resolutions, if that's what, that's what it takes from the board.
Because the ordinances will take a heavy lift, especially a sales tax, because we don't.
I misspoke, resolutions.
Okay.
Supervisor Askew, did you have something you were going to add on this too?
Let's just, so Supervisor Alejo, you're talking about, it says, in our staff report, it says the consultant and staff cost to prepare the required ordinance and ballot measures is approximately $200,000. I don't think we move forward with a $200,000 expenditure until we know that we have four fifths, and then we move forward based on that agreement.
Well, if you actually look at the resolutions that were passed by the Board of Supervisors, it's like a three-page document, right? And there are perhaps some other documents that, that need to be done, but you're not starting from scratch. There's other counties that have done this that could save a lot of time, a lot of resources, you know. I don't think we've done, done one of these in quite some time, so I don't know if those numbers are inflated, but, but at some point, I think that's ultimately what we have to do, actually make a draft of those resolutions.
There's two things we need to decide here. We need to decide on a time we want to bring this up and two, what more information we're wanting.
I think the questions that I would have in order to get us to, to four fifths would, for me, you know, I hear, I hear arguments about the amount of money and the return on investment. That's if we're comparing a 1% to a 1%, which has been discussed and there's negotiation around that. I would be curious to know what would it take to get everyone to agreement? What would it take to move everyone to say we're going to put both of them on? What does that need to look like? Those are questions that I would, I would like to, to better understand.
But it's like, if you, I think we all mentioned, I think three of us mentioned that we were for one, and you're acting like, what's going to get us to, to both, but your majority of your colleagues said, we're not interested in that.
Okay, well, we had three, we had three votes of that direction last, last week, so I'm not off-base in saying like, how do we get to an agreement where we move, where we can move forward? That's what I'm interested in understanding.
One thing I would like to, to see is just at this point, and I know it's a little bit nebulous, is what other revenue enhancements are going to be on the ballot, both locally and other cities, and, and also the state, you know, at this point. What is being considered? Because we're, we're talking about, we're putting, you can't put two issues on the ballot, but what else is on the ballot? I mean, I, you know, I think that's an important part to know and understand.
I'm not aware that City of Salinas has made a decision yet.
At least under consideration at this point. At this point, we don't know what's on the ballot.
We could check with our legislative folks, our elections office.
We can, but it is, it is a little early. What we have heard back is Salinas is currently conducting polling on their Measure G on renewing it, and then we know King City is also considering a measure as well to bring up theirs. So those are the two that we know of so far.
I know Del, you know, Delray Oaks is a small place, for example, so I don't mean to, 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 you know, knock them down or anything, but I know they're considering the TOTs. But the fact is, I think we need to look around at the other cities and just see if they're considering anything. And then it'd be nice to know, for our own self, I know we've heard, we've talked about stuff from the state, but I'd like to see what really is being considered for the state as well. Those, I think, would be somewhat helpful. Is there any, you know, supervisors that want to get any other information here that would be useful?
Yeah, I guess I'm still unclear what Supervisor Askew, Supervisor Alejo's asking for in terms of bringing back. I mean, I'd be happy to have both of the measures drafted for us to vote on at the, at the next meeting, but I'm not sure if I'm clear about what you're asking for. And I think there, there will be, there will be many, many measures that are on the ballot. There will be many requests for funding and resources. We can try to collect that, but I know, you know, MPSC is also talking about it. There's, there's many, every jurisdiction right now is having these conversations. And I think for us, for me, this really is about what's the best for Monterey County? And what does our community deserve? And what does our workforce deserve? And what do our residents deserve to have in terms of resources being put back into, to, to the budget? We have tremendous unmet needs, and we have an opportunity to put things forward that will likely result in a passage and approval and ongoing revenue generation. If we're talking about waiting four years to, to put, to put TOT on the ballot, I mean, that's literally just money left on the table that could be going back into the, for the benefit of our, of our county residents right now.
And I'm, I'm trying to see if I got a copy of the Santa Cruz County Resolution, but I, I remember, I think I got a copy a while back, and I think it was only like a three or four-page document, right? So if, if our, if our CEO and our county council could, could see what, what did they do for, for the board to approve their ballot measure, then that, that would kind of give us an idea of what, what's entailed in such a document. And then from there, we could start working on drafting ours and modifying the different, both for, for the TOT and the sales tax.
Are we going to want to, you know, bring this back next week? And then again, I, I think, you know, every supervisor needs to, to think what would open up their mind to, to other alternatives at this point. And two weeks, two weeks, two weeks would put us in, 18th, I guess, right? No, we can't, we're not meeting in two weeks. We're not meeting that week.
It'd have to be the 25th.
That puts us right up against the wall at that point. Looking to the board wants to, Supervisor Adams, are you just?
I'm getting so tired of it, I'm not going to vote for either one.
Yeah, because it's either next week, I think, yeah, voter fatigue already on the board. I think we have to, I would aim that we bring it whatever we can by next week. Sonia, I know, I, I hear you needing more time, but we are off on the 18th, there's no meeting. And then, or at least with that one option at the meeting, and then I'm gone. And on such an issue, I'd hate to, to not be able to vote on it because I was absent, which I notified this board many months ago. So at least it gives us two bites at the apple on the 11th and on the 25th to make a decision.
There actually is another possibility. We are meeting briefly on the 20th for, to approve the budget. But Supervisor Lopez, are you gone during that? Can you attend by Zoom for parts of the time in the morning?
It's a possibility. I've, I'm agreed to serve on two panels that day, so it depends on what time.
Make it three, you know?
We're at it.
Yeah, if the 20th could, we could add that as an item on that day, that, that'll work as well.
I am trying to remember right now if we have another item on the agenda that day besides the budget.
We were working to move the grand jury responses to that day, so it'll be, it won't be too long.
Take too long. So that would really, you know, we could have a meeting in the morning then, and that might give a compromise time. So do, it looks like, have an agreement from the board here, we're going to move this to the 20th, and, and I would, you know, urge every supervisor, if you have a question, to ask staff for it, or county council, or do your own research and try to see if we can come to a decision on this. With that.
So no decision needed at this point. I think staff just got hurt us out and what, what we could prepare for, for the 20th.
I believe so. So, yeah. Good. So we're back to item 14, and, but we have an agreement, right?
Yep. We're going back to the senior citizen project. Just kidding. The, yeah. Supervisor Adams, I fell out of your chair there. The, thank you, yes, Mr. Chair. With the help of staff, we've come up with a proposal, which I think should make everybody happy, I hope, because it's all we could think of, was we'll do 23 market rate, two moderates, and then based on what Mr. Spencer described earlier as the relative ability for size of the lows, we can do, we can do two low-income duplexes for four low-income units, two moderate income units, and then there's a small delta of, in Luffy because of the fraction that's left over. And that will work because that way it's not, it's something economically, and in answer to Supervisor Askew's comments, it's not that the developer has no interest in people of lower, very low income living here, it's that the state won't qualify someone whose maximum mortgage payment can be $500 a month to live in a place where that's not feasible. And, and unfortunately, you know, I don't happen to live in one, but they tell me that when you live inside of a gated community with the private road costs and the private security gate and the private landscaping and everything, that it's, the, the homeowner's dues are quite expensive. And as Mr. Spencer also said, the cost of sewer service and water service is also quite expensive out there because there's a private sewer plant. I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's not a, it's a utility-run system, but it's just that project, so it's very expensive. So there's no way to economically do very low, but we can do low in the way that we do, we do four low-income units, two duplexes, that will look like the other houses with, for all intents and purposes. That also keeps us within the 30-unit cap that the EIR, county's EIR studied. That puts us at 29 housing units, and so we don't run afoul of the environmental impact there. It produces a, a project that will look homogeneous for all intents and purposes. There won't be someone who says like, it won't look like, well, why do you live in a little house, you know, when everybody else lives in a 1,500-square-foot house? And that way, we increase the amount of low. So I hope that's it, because I have no more blood to give today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the work, discussion that went on, adding, you know, four, this is low, you know, low or very, I don't know what we're looking at here, low, right? Four low, four low, which is a, a big step forward because we had zero. And again, that is what the greatest need is for people in, in this county. So, you know, I, I can support that with, with this step here going forward. I think we've made some progress. Yes, County Council?
I, I just want to ask staff if you need to come back with a resolution to make those appropriate findings.
Yes, we, we do need to add the two new units because duplexes versus single-family dwellings to that amendment to the specific plan on the table and a couple other little tweaks. So we could come back. If there's a motion of intent or something, we could, we could do that on consent potentially. And it, it wouldn't take long.
I, I think you're looking for a motion to give that direction.
So I could make the motion to approve the project with the changes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
And will, will the, could give the direction they'll come back for final approval just on, on consent?
Yep.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
Just a quick comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I very much want to tell, to express my appreciation both to the families, the people who are here representing the, the project, Mr. Lombardo, and to our very capable staff for really working through this. I really appreciate your efforts to make this happen. Thank you. And it will, it'll be great for people.
Same here. Thank you.
And, and your closing public comment on this item?
I already closed it.
Yeah, okay.
It was, yeah. I think all the, everything's been buttoned and zipped up, so we're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passes 5-0.
Right.
Okay. Go on to other, other board matters right now. CAO De La Rosa, you have wisdom to share.
Oh, I'm just going to keep it really simple. I just, again, want to commend the work done by our team, specifically Nick Chulloson receiving that award from California State Association of Counties and, but truly all the work that's being done throughout the county by all of our employees. And Nick is really just a representative of all the work that happens in every department that is part of this county. So thank you.
We'll go now to board comments, and I'll look Supervisor Adams over here.
Thank you very much. This Thursday, June 6th, I'm hosting a community gathering in Big Sur with two of our coastal commissioners, who serve on the California Coastal Commission, and two staff members from the Coastal Commission Central Office. It's an opportunity to meet and greet for the locals with those who represent us on the Coastal Commission. That'll be from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Big Sur Lodge Conference Room. And then the following morning, we have our quarterly scheduled BISMAC meeting, the Big Sur Multi-Agency Advisory Committee Meeting at 10:00 at the Big Sur Lodge. We will be making this meeting available for members of the public to attend in person or to be able to watch it via streamed, live-streamed webinar. And I really appreciate Alex and the work he's doing to make that possible. Friday, I'm going to be presenting the annual Gibson Awards Award to, for the Monterey County Bar Association, to Judge Stephanie Holsey at the Monterey Plaza. And finally, I just want to say thank you to all of the county employees who have taken the Employee Employment Engagement Survey through Human Resources. I think your feedback is incredibly valuable and for taking the time to do the, to complete the form was really great, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks who have participated in that. Thank you.
I'll just go, Mr. Chair, and quickly share that tomorrow night, I'll be having a listening session in Solidad. Look forward to seeing the public out there. Other small pieces, we did recently see sign changes in Chular, which changes the flow of traffic exiting 101 from the southbound so that our CAO never once again gets caught nearly having to sit on the freeway. It was a great partnership between Caltrans and our own Public Works team to make those changes happen. We're continuing to monitor the impact of that. So far, the majority of reviews from community are positive, but just be aware, some folks are operating off muscle memory and not using their eyes to drive it this time, going through those stop signs, so be very careful. We understand it could take up to six months for those habits to change, and so we're encouraging folks to just be aware that the signage has changed in the community of Chular. Again, it prioritizes folks exiting the southbound traffic off 101, allowing them to get off the freeway and not back onto the freeway. A positive impact overall for community, making us all safer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Alejo?
I wanted to, first of all, again, congratulate all our high school graduates. Most of them here in Salinas graduated last, last Thursday, so thank, congrats to the Salinas High School District for all that work to get those done. Tremendous turnout at those graduations. And my own cousin, graduate from Rancho San Juan High School here in Salinas, so congrats to Ivy Mungia Alejo. I also wanted to thank our staff, especially our CEO, Mr. Vega, Ezekiel Vega, and, and our HCD Director, Craig Spencer, for coming to my town hall held at the Gavelan Library. We had a great turnout, but I, this reminded me sitting, seeing our staff speak and answer questions. We got a really good team, really professionals, and the community appreciated, and we had a lot of different points of view, but our staff were cool, calm and collective, really respectful to our constituents, and so I wanted to thank them for that extra time they put to make that possible in District 1. Tomorrow, there's a Small Business Development Center grand opening through the Monterey County Business Council here in Salinas at 5:00. So I'll be attending that. I just want to get back to one issue, though. I did submit a referral today during our meeting about our maintenance workers here. I'm very concerned about them. It seems that the contract for maintenance is transitioning, but I want to make sure, one worker in particular that we all know and her team, that they, that they not be displaced. This one worker has been here 14 years. Her other team's been here numerous years. They love working here, they love working and cleaning our offices, but I want to make sure that in this transition, that they are not displaced and that they lose their jobs. And, and they are very full of anxiety right now. So I, I, very focused, I hope this is something we could bring to the board. I hope it can be resolved before then, but I know the power of the county can help make the right decisions and the best outcome for them, and so I, I hope that we could take care of our dedicated employees, even though not direct employees, they are people who work with us almost every day of the week. Last thing, I might, I'm on jury duty next week, so I'll call in on Friday. I don't know if I'll be missing on Monday or Tuesday, but that's my circumstances. I got to do my, my civic duty by I got to do my civic duty by showing up to jury duty next week. Thank you.
Supervisor Askew?
I also got called to jury duty. I'm not sure what list we're on here. I don't know if it's the same day, but anyway. I'm also hosting a listening session on tomorrow, actually, Wednesday, June 5th. From 5:30 to 6:30, we'll be on Zoom and Facebook Live. It'll be our LGBTQ plus IA listening session. We'll hear more about the work and ongoing needs of the epicenter, Salinas Valley Pride, Monterey Peninsula Pride, and the County of Monterey's LGBTQ plus Employee Resource Group. So we invite everyone to join us, bring your questions and listening in learning ears. Also wanted to mention that this evening, there is, not hosted by Monterey County, but I will be tuning in, a Sheriff Oversight in California online Zoom presentation. The California Coalition for Sheriff Oversight is hosting this event with expert panels, members from the San Francisco Sheriff Oversight Board, the Sonoma County Director of their oversight agency, and the ACLU. So they're going to be getting together to share experiences, challenges, lessons learned, best practices, as we continue to explore and research and learn more and try to figure out how to bring some recommendations forward to this board. I just wanted to let the public know for anyone who's interested that that's free, it's online. You can check my social media page and we'll make sure that it's posted so that you can get on. Or just if you do a Google search for the Sheriff Oversight in California, Balancing Power with Responsibility, you'll find that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you wrap us, one more congratulations, and that's to our Parks Department, who had a record revenue weekend at the lakes during Memorial Day weekend, shattering all records. Just wanted to congratulate them on that. That's a good thing we've turned a corner at those facilities. Thank you.
That's, that's great news. I just, a few items here. I want to mention that this weekend is the Artichoke Festival, which we all know has been abducted and taken to Monterey from its natural home in Casterville, which we hope shall be returned to at some time. You know, it raises, raises money for a lot of good north county causes, lots of great food and entertainment. It's this Saturday and Sunday. And there's also this Sunday, it's the first 2024 Romas Grange Community Market, which will, which is between 9:30 and 1:00, will be held the first Sunday through October. It has some produce, honey, handmade items, and live music. Also, next week, on June 13th, we will, my office will be having our town hall in Los Lomas and Nahpaharo. It's on June 13th. And Thursday is also the 80th anniversary of D-Day for those who, you know, it's liberated Europe from Nazism. Heroes, heroes, and very few of them are left, I hear. This will be perhaps the last celebration with any of them there. Do we have a readout from County Council?
No reportable action from closed session.
Right, with that, I want to adjourn in memory of Bridgette Peterson. She was a dietitian who worked at Natividad and was dedicated to providing excellent patient-centered care throughout her time there. She will be sorely missed and by the, by the many, many people who worked with her and she helped. And with that, we shall adjourn today's meeting.